Calling to order the Monday, February 6th, 2023, meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Dooley?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Valani?
Here.
Mayor Dean?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Valani. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to use the mayor-led moment of reflection this evening. I'm not going to lead anything, but I'm going to offer that we take a moment of silence And I look forward to the day where we won't have to have a moment of silence for things like this. Please stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We've reached the Citizens' Comments portion of our evening. When you present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda, you will have three minutes to speak on your topic. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence, and please remember you have three minutes.
Figured somebody else would want to come up, but good evening. My name is Joel Olfert, citizen of Berkeley since 2001. And you may remember, I was here 10 years ago, or at least Baker would, complaining about something, actually talking about Coolidge at the time, which we're still talking about. But I think you may recall some of the emails, in fact, today's email. It's intended to be helpful. It may not come across like that, but I think it wasn't too long ago you saw emails from me regarding Parks and Rec and probably code enforcement. But again, don't get me wrong, my child is the poster child, literally, of the Parks and Rec master plan. So my comments are that I want the reasoning and the true costs of any resolution on the agenda or in the minutes, especially projects where the cost is spread over two resolutions or shared by two departments. I would add multiple years to that so that, you know, when resolutions are split between departments and it's so complicated looking at the budget, it's not, I don't even know how you would comprehend what you're approving, really. Anyways, the other comment relative to the Headley override, so it's forecasted to add $2.5 million to next year's operating budget, bringing the total operating budget to $11.75 million. It would continue in perpetuity, the millage that is, and more than counteract the effect of Headley rollbacks since the last override by a factor of two, maybe even 2.3. I don't have the latest numbers, but the point is, the revenue is not declining, so I'm really trying to figure out what's going on.
Mr. Olfert, you have about 30 seconds.
Okay. So does the city know how to spend the money for the millage? Currently only 2019 revenues and expenditures on the dashboard. I'd like to see at least a five-year projection there. Would it show pending service cuts? Would it show unrealized federal grants and dispensary revenues? Do you still plan to transfer $1.37 million to the Parks and Rec Department? How much grant money is available? The Spark Grant, I believe, for J.C. is still pending. Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis, don't disappoint us.
Good evening to this honorable body. Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of our Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. Since you prompted me, might as well just share that council members and city leaders were invited to a ribbon cutting, but we have so many new, exciting members of the city council, so I'll work to update that calendar invite. But just to reiterate, Core LP Fitness on 12 Mile Road has the ribbon cutting this Friday, February 10th at 5:00 p.m., and all city leaders are welcome to help roll out the red carpet, or at least the red ribbon, with some big fancy, oversized scissors. The many new businesses joining the downtown Berkeley family, and that's the latest one that we're celebrating. So that's Core LP Fitness, located across the street from Linda's Dance Works. That might be the best landmark for you, and we look forward to seeing those, whose schedules allow it. Thank you.
Seeing no one else running up to the microphone, I'm going to close public comments. And I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege. Mr. Baumgarten, would you follow up, please, with Mr. Olfert with corrections to his comments regarding what he stated this evening? There are plenty that need to be addressed.
Yes, Mayor, certainly. And thank you for sharing questions with us, both here and then also sending them ahead of time, as you referenced. I will make sure to follow up directly and hope we can schedule a meeting, that we can address some of the high-level points that he had made, mostly in his emails. It'd be good to add those to our FAQs. Certainly, those are available on the city's website. If you log on to, you know, www.berklymich, at the top header, you'll see Millage 2023. It's a ton of really good information there, for sure. First property taxable values are not increasing with expenditures, as we know, and it's a real challenge to understand that Michigan laws are set up to ensure that this is the case, and largely to the detriment of communities all across our state, unfortunately. And just to kind of reiterate from our last meeting, our budgeting process has already started. I am having our team work on two budgets, one a success at the ballot box and the other one without. And so really kind of peeling back those curtains, my staff, specifically my department directors, they all work collectively on subject, as subject matter experts in their field to develop the best budgets for their departments. They work collectively, you know, with their staff and their fields to determine how much general operating dollars are allocated to each department and service. This allocation, kind of quoting here, this allocation is based on numbers of factors, some of which Mr. Olfert brought up, but does take into account inflation, organizational council goals, community needs, market rate for goods and services, the city's capital improvement plan, and more. When we then present this in a proposed budget to the city council for approval, this happens every May, so anyone's available to come to these things, the budget works, there's the city's budget work sessions. I encourage anyone and everyone who is interested to come and review those on our webpage or on our YouTube channel. You can actually catch one's previous as well. We go line by line, for those that have never sat through, watched there, and go line by line and offer justifications for each of those spending items there. So those are certainly available. Lastly, I want to thank Mr. Ulfert for the detailed questions, and appreciate the sharing with him. I think they're helpful to get these questions out and answered as fast as possible, and we'll continue to update our dashboard, again, on our website, right at the top header, Millage 2023, so that we can kind of always continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, have you received any correspondence that you, that we want to unredent to the record this evening?
I have not.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, January 9th, 2023, and special city council meeting on January 23rd, 2023. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1382. Three, proclamation number P223, matter proclaiming March 2023 as Women's History Month. Four, proclamation number P323, matter proclaiming March 2023 as Severe Weather Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Patterson. Are there any changes or corrections? Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Within the consent agenda, council adopted a proclamation declaring March 2023 as Women's History Month in Berkeley.
It's not the self-destructal.
Right now.
They're testing the severe weather alert system.
Why you put me over here?
Mind your feet. I've asked Councilmember Valani to read the proclamation.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing March 2023 as Women's History Month in the City of Berkeley. Whereas in 1987, the United States Congress passed Public Law 100-9, designating the month of March as Women's History Month. In the years since 1995, the President of the United States has issued an annual proclamation designating the month of March as Women's History Month. Whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation, state, and local communities in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the working labor force and historically providing a majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas, women are leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in every major civil rights movement in modern history. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued, both in literature and in the history books. And whereas, Women's History Month is a time to celebrate the collective power of women, uphold women's achievements, recognize challenges, focus greater attention on women's rights and gender equality, encourage and mobilize all people to do their part to bring about positive change. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, that the month of March 2023 shall be recognized and celebrated as Women's History Month in the City of Berkeley. Section 2, the City of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Berkeley to recommit to increasing our support and recognition of the contributions made by all women of our community. Section 3, the Council of the City of Berkeley encourages the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Berkeley to choose to challenge gender stereotypes and bias and to recommit to actively challenge all gender discrimination, proclaimed this 6th day of February 2023 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, signed by Mayor Bridget Dean.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number 2 on tonight's agenda?
Oaths of Office, Councilmember Gregory Patterson and Deputy Clerk Rachel Patterson to receive an oath of office from the city clerk.
Madam Clerk, are you ready to administer the oaths of office?
I'll have you raise your right hand. I, Gregory Patterson?
I, Gregory Patterson.
Having been duly appointed?
Having been duly appointed.
As city council member for the City of Berkeley?
As city council member for the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear?
Do hereby solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley?
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties of my office?
And that I will perform the duties of my office?
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Rachel, okay, I'll have you raise your right hand.
I, Rachel Patterson?
I, Rachel Patterson.
Having been duly appointed?
Having been duly appointed.
As deputy city clerk for the City of Berkeley?
As deputy city clerk for the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear?
Do hereby solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley?
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties of my office?
And that I will perform the duties of my office?
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations, Councilmember Patterson and Deputy Clerk Patterson. No relationship. And I hope we're not having another Matt situation here. We have a lot of Matts. Now we're going to have a run on Pattersons. Welcome, both of you. We're happy to have you on board. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number 3 on tonight's agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from the Accounting Aid Society.
I'd like to welcome and introduce the Accounting Aid Society's CFO, Priscilla Perkins, and COO, Gabrielle Thomas. I appreciate both of you coming out here tonight to talk to us about what the Accounting Aid Society does and how our residents could utilize your services.
Thank you so much. And Bridget, I don't want to confuse the financial people among us that know a thing about finance. Is that actually CEO?
Oh, sorry. Typo.
No problem. And thank you so much for welcoming us here, Madam Mayor, and...
Oh, can you come to the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because it won't, it won't pick up.
Okay. It was a joke.
Yeah.
I just wanted to reinforce that although the title CFO would be an honor, I am actually the chief executive officer and president of Accounting Aid Society. So don't ask me too many financial questions, but we are honored to have come before you for our wonderful, to talk about our wonderful service to community for 50 years. And with me is the star, our chief operating officer, COO, Gabrielle Thomas, who will lead the presentation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight. As Priscilla said, I'm Gabrielle Thomas. I'm the chief operating officer to Accounting Aid Society, and I'm not sure Accounting Aid Society is one of the best-kept secrets in town. I'm not sure if anybody's heard of us. Ross has, because I've worked with him in the past. He's learning from ear to ear, because he knows the secret. Can I move this far? So Accounting Aid Society is a 50-year-old nonprofit, and we use taxes to build relationships and relationships to build futures. I know taxes isn't a real sexy thing, but it's a very important part of our lives, and we do make jokes and can have fun. So I'm going to just get this off to a little fun thing instead of being so formal. Okay, let's see if I can remember. I'm not good at jokes. Why do skunks not have to pay taxes?
Why?
Because they only have one cent.
Oh.
So that's the kind of humor we have around our office. So we're committed to creating an economy that works for everyone. In the work that we do, from individual services to business services, we were established in 1972, and our job is to make sure that people have the financial stability to grow and enjoy their lives. Next. That's a little bit of who we are. How we are is we have 50 years of experience. We are subject matter experts. We have CPAs, enrolled agents, attorneys on our staff. We, right now, we have 35 staff members that are IRS-certified tax preparers. So we come with a huge amount of experience, and our impact is incredible. Last year, we returned $24 million to Southeast Michigan residents, to individual residents. So we are a big presence here. So I want to go over our programs a little bit. The first one that you probably all know about is the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. We call it VIDA. We have 22 locations in Southeast Michigan. We have, and our newest and bestest one is just down the street in Ferndale, the corner of Nine Mile and Woodbury. And so we are accessible to all people around Southeast Michigan. We provide access, we provide tax preparation and access to important credits like the Earned Income Tax Credit, the Child Tax Credit, Michigan Home Stead Property Tax Credit. The Earned Income Tax Credit in the past couple of years has been super important, and as we all know, on the governor's plate right now, saying something that she's going to sign to increase that EITC in Michigan, from 6% of the federal EITC to 30% of the federal EITC. So it's a very important credit for working families. We have the highest accuracy rate out of all tax preparers. We're better than H&R Block, we're better than Jackson Hewitt, and I hate to say it, we're better than a lot of the CPA firms, too, when it comes to individual taxes. We have a 94% accuracy rate that has been proven by the IRS. We're around year-round. We don't pack up, shop, and leave. We are here year-round, and all of our staff and our 242 volunteers this year are all certified by the IRS. So that's our volunteer, oh, let me say this, too. It's available for free to everyone who makes under $60,000 a year. No charge, guaranteed great service. This could be an important thing for your families that are struggling with work right now, for seniors especially, and we have, so this is something that we want you to be able to share with your community. And so wrapping around with that is our Low Income Taxpayer Clinic. So our Low Income Taxpayer Clinic helps taxpayers if they have issues with the IRS. You get that letter from the IRS, everybody starts freaking out. They put it away, they put it with their tax documents, they go to do their tax documents the next year, and it's like, oh, my gosh, I missed a deadline. I was supposed to pay something. What do I do? We are here to help. We have CPAs, attorneys, and enrolled agents that directly represent taxpayers with the IRS and help them take care of their problems. If somebody comes to get their taxes done with us and they pull out one of those letters, we make sure they do not leave with being connected to our Low Income Taxpayer Clinic. So it's a wraparound service. We take care of everything that's bothering you and keeping you from sleeping at night. The other thing we do is we provide individual and community education. Part of the mission of the Low Income Taxpayer Clinics is to educate the community about the Earned Income Tax Credit, about child tax credits, about your responsibilities to the IRS as a taxpayer, and what your rights are as a taxpayer as well. So we do a lot of community events, educating taxpayers through cities like yours, through neighborhood clubs, so that's one of the missions of that program as well. And finally, our newest program, we've been around 50 years, this program's been around five, it's called our Accounting Aid Academy. We found that some of, some of the taxpayers that came to us had issues relating to self-employment that we could not do because the IRS wouldn't let them do it, but they still needed help. So we started a program that helps small businesses, people that have side jobs, that have rental income, that can't use a free service but are still making lower incomes. So we provide one-on-one service to do taxes, to help people set up their books, to get their accounting systems right, to teach them how to use financial statements, to make business decisions moving forward. We go from micro-micro entrepreneurs to entrepreneurs that are getting into brick and mortar, are just starting to access capital and use and leverage that capital, or businesses that have been in business for years but have just been doing their books like this and don't really understand how to make that move them forward or secure that for their family in the long term. So it's a really interesting program that as you start new businesses in the area, we can come do some one-on-ones, participate in some of those business, some of those Chamber of Commerce meetings that you have, making our service available to them. So those are three programs. This is 22 program impact, actually, we had more. 20, we had 24 million returned to taxpayers. We helped 400 small businesses. We had 120 people we helped resolve issues with the IRS. This is from a small and growing nonprofit. So we're pretty impressed with that. So next is, how do we get involved? Spread the word. I've got some flyers for you here. We use QR, we're using QR codes a lot to keep, because everything stays more current that way. We're on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn. We can also use volunteers. So I know there's some seniors in this community, a lot of seniors, people that want to give back to the community. We're here to help them be able to give back in a way that works for them. And then the other thing is host a community meeting for, with us, or join us to join in your community meetings, because we're here to help all of Southeast Michigan. And that's all I have right now. In case anybody has any questions, Priscilla or I would be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Thank you. If somebody did want to find out more, is there a particular website you direct them to, or a phone number, or something that you could share with?
AccountingAidSociety.org.
Perfect.
I should probably have put that on there, a little QR code that everybody...
It's all good. Just wanted to make sure that folks that were intrigued by the information that you shared this evening, I have a way to follow up and learn more. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, we appreciate you. Anything else?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a big thank you, Gabby. Like you indicated, we had a chance to work together for a long time when I was at the Treasurer's Office, and the services that the Accounting Aid Society provides is invaluable for low-income communities and low-income individuals, and so just thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, too, and thank you for hosting us here and being able to share our passion with your community.
We're very happy to have you. Thank you both so much for coming.
Okay.
Our pleasure, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. The collateral we have, should we just leave it on the table, or should we?
I brought some flyers for people.
With the QR code and the website address.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, will you read item number four, please?
Motion number M1123, matter of authorizing the city manager to approve the proposal from Quadrate Construction LLC to replace underground conduits and wiring connecting City Hall to public safety and install sub-meter to accurately track City Hall electric usage at a cost not to exceed $120,126. In addition, allocate $12,000 for contingencies.
Is there a motion to approve M1123?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Brown?
Good evening. As most of you are aware, this project has been a 10-plus-year initiative here that now that I'm here taking care of the facilities, we're able to get it moving and potentially save a catastrophic event from happening. We've had extremely leaky conduits that are connecting our public safety building to this building, which all of City Hall's power is sourced. So this is kind of a urgent matter that's been kind of pushed down the road, but now is the time, so we're going to get it repaired, have all new conduits installed, new wiring installed. And while doing this project, we're going to also install a sub-metering system, so we'll be able to tell how much each building's using, because right now, it's all one bill. So we can't really determine what City Hall is using, what public safety building's using, and that'll help go towards our green initiatives and energy savings and stuff like that. Should be a pretty non-invasive project. It's all going to be underground, boring. There'll be some... and that'll help go towards our green initiatives and energy savings and stuff like that. Should be a fairly non-invasive project. It's all going to be underground, boring. There'll be some slight disruptions to landscape on both sides of the parking lot, but nothing too drastic. There won't be much, there won't be any shutdowns or anything like that. All power will be switched on Saturday for a City Hall, so it won't shut down City Hall for any amount of time or anything like that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baumgarten, do you have anything to add?
Just note, some of the issues we've had with the all being on one bill is we've made some really exciting updates to the lighting and some energy efficiency projects that Alex has been at the forefront of, but sometimes they are lost in the mix of the 24-hour station that comes along with public safety. So, being able to track these items just gets us that much closer to meeting our 2019 energy plan goals.
Great, thank you. Discussion from counsel. Public input. Yes.
I don't mean to take up another three minutes or anything, but...
But go ahead.
Was this, no, not at all. Was this shown in the budget or the capital improvement plan? That was all.
I believe it was reflected in the capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Yes, counsel.
Thank you. Just on a technical note, I suppose, does this also include the fiber lines or are those in a separate conduit that don't have the same issues?
Currently, those are in a separate conduit and are not experiencing those issues. So, as of right now, those are not, those are okay for the time being, yeah. And hopefully, knock on wood, they will stay that way, yeah. That won't be an issue moving forward, but...
Thank you for the references, yeah.
Good question because, you know, fiber conduit.
Absolutely.
And they could, yes, okay. All right, I think we're good unless anyone has anything else they wanted to add. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 1123.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M 1123 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Motion Number M 1223, Matter of Approving a Proposal from Hubbell, Roth, and Clark for Assistance with Water Service Line Material Verification, GIS Mapping, and Reporting with a Not to Exceed Amount of $50,741.51. Funding for this work was previously approved under Account Number 592-536-818-000 and would be eligible for reimbursement under the Oakland County Local Government Critical Infrastructure Grant that was recently awarded to the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M 1223?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Young?
Evening. I should probably start with what the CD-SMI actually is.
Yes.
I thought he was going to start with a joke.
As you know, after the Flint water crisis, a lot of things with lead services changed. And one of the things is municipalities had to inventory, send a preliminary inventory of what their account of lead services were. So, that was based on our tap cards, records, and they quickly found out that these records are 50, 100 years old. A lot of them are hard to read, a lot of them aren't accurate. So, now they've moved to a physical verification. So, we're required to verify 364 services and line that information up with our tap cards. And if it's accurate, then we know, okay, 20% number lead services, we know where to move for the future. If it's not accurate, we may have to verify even more. So, what this is, is assistance with the mapping, reporting. You know, as you know, we're pretty heavy in GIS mapping now. So, they would create that map, and it would not only be for just a small portion, these 364, but for the foreseeable future for all of our services.
Great. Any questions from counsel? Yes, Counselor.
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. So, this focuses on the city's infrastructure, right? This doesn't look at the residents' lines as well or...
Nope.
Okay.
This is both public and private.
Public and private, excellent.
Public and private. And as part of this verification, we have to hit three points, and one is inside by the meter. So, we'll need the public's help. We need to come inside or at least send us a photo of that inside. And then, there's two spots. One would be just inside of the sidewalk, past the curb stop. So, it'd be about a, you know, the physical verification is a hydro excavation job. So, it'd be about a two-foot circumference circle, straight down on top of the service. We suck down and look at it and see what it is, take a picture, put it in GIS. And then, the other side of the sidewalk, about five feet away, we do the same thing. So, it's focused on both sides. We have three points that we have to get, three of the four. We're not going to really pursue the stuff in the road because that gets vastly expensive compared to what we're doing with this.
Sure. So, given that this is both public and private, then to what extent are we anticipating like a communication outreach plan, scheduling of appointments, those kinds of things?
The 364, we've already got the number, so they're going to get that randomly selected 364. We've got that number. They'll get a notification there for each one of those, along with what's going to happen, what to expect, what to expect for restoration. And if there are any other problems with the restoration, just call us. We'll come and take care of it. And there'll also be, if we do find lead, they would get the access agreement forms and get on the lead replacement schedule to get those services replaced.
Nice. Just to kind of foreshadow some of that, about how long would an individual inspection set take for a given resident? Are we talking a half an hour? Is it three days? You know, that kind of thing.
Generally, we should be able to do eight to 10 of them a day, so probably less than an hour. Things like tree roots or other obstructions may, you know, you may get one that goes an hour. One might be three just because of a lot of tree roots or other things in the area, but generally, an hour or so.
Minimally invasive, as they call it, yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Baumgarten, did you have something?
I was going to note, you hit on a very, a topic that was discussed at great length in a lot of different communities. The only reason we're working on private items is because Eagle shifted the burden specifically to local governments. We would not typically to work on someone's what we consider to be interior piping or really use any public funds for our private benefits as a general rule, if not for the change that the state made that shifted everything up to the meter instead of up to the stop box onto the local government. So, it's not a precedent we look to extend into any other item, for sure, but we have to do this because it's the state's requirement now.
Thank you, Ken.
Councilmember Valani?
Can you clarify for the part that is being funded by the Critical Infrastructure Grant? Is that the full $50,000? Is it a partial funding, just for residents to understand?
We've got up, this is about $150,000 in the grant. So, that would cover that $50,000, and then, we would call it force account work. So, our city staff and equipment rental, which is an internal number, that would help cover those costs. So, it'd actually be covering part of the cost of the physical verifications as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, and just to clarify one part about the public-private part. So, the private part we're looking at is just between the stop box and the meter. We're not looking at piping, including when we do replacement of lead line. If there's any lead or galvanized past the meter, we don't take care of that.
Correct. Right now, it's not mandatory that we take care of that. What we're mainly looking at is stop box to the first valve, so there may be a little piping between the first valve and the meter that's still private. Then, everything after the meter, when we go in, we're going to document that. Just that's what we see because we never know what the future holds, but right now, we're not doing anything with that.
Thank you.
Any public input at this point? Anybody have a question or comment? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Young. Appreciate it. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M 1223?
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M 1323, Matter of Approving Applicant for Issuance of an On-Premise Liquor License Under Section 521A 1B of 2006 PA 501, MCL 436.1521A 1B. Applicant Little Lou's Hot Chicken, 2626 Coolidge Highway, Berkeley, Michigan 48072.
Is there a motion to approve M 1323?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dooley. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, after eating some hot chicken, one would need something to quench their thirst that comes from that. And right now, Little Lou's has gone through the process of and supplied all the paperwork needed to potentially make that an alcoholic beverage served onsite. They had the, in their memo here, as a portion of their application, they went through the requirements that they had to pursue for, to be ready for this. The bottom line is they're up around $75,000 as far as renovations goes. That is the minimum required to pursue a redevelopment license that they have access to by virtue of being in our Downtown Development Authority District. And so, they've, again, submitted the items that they need to us as well as the state, and it's now complete enough to come before the governing body to consider approval of it.
Thank you. Ms. Kapalansky, do you have anything you want to add to this? Check in, making sure. Okay. Any discussion from counsel, questions? Where are the Little Lou's people? Come on up, please.
How are you all doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. Just in case anybody has a question, questions?
Questions, comments, concerns, suggestions?
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for folks that happen to be driving by or curious, what kinds of renovations and improvements might one expect to see?
So, on the side of the building, there's a patio. It has about 12 tables in it right now. We're looking at doing more or less a pergola-type structure. It's going to cover this space for the summer months to prevent, you know, sun, all that sort of stuff. We're also looking at some of the winter months as well, having some enclosure to have it be where you could dine out there year-round. Some of the extreme weather years, months, whatever, you can't really dine out there even with heaters or whatever, but we're going to have that be like a year-round space as much as we can, potential for parties, if people want to have, you know, birthday parties, retirement parties, anything of that sort of thing. So, that's where the renovation is really going to come into place, so.
Excellent. And then, as far as signage with like, you know, permission within this particular range only, you can't take it out that, you know, is that part of the plan as well?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at having that patio be only accessed through the main entrance of the business. It's not going to be somewhere you can just kind of stroll off the street and get into it from there, so.
And about what timeframe might this project begin and end?
I mean, as soon as we get approval from you guys, we already have someone in the works right now that can complete the project for us. It's within the requirements for the investment. As soon as we get that, we can pull the trigger on it, start doing the renovation because before we can get the license, we have to have the renovation done, so.
Is it extensive renovation? Do you think it'll be done in a week, a month, a year?
It's probably about, I would say anywhere from like three weeks to six weeks. It's probably what it's going to take to get that done, so.
Nice. To be ready for the nice warm weather, then.
Yes, we're trying to be, for sure, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, looking at the renderings in our packet, I know it's not exactly what you're doing, but it's an idea of what you're doing, and I would fully support that. I think any kind of enhancement of a business, especially in the downtown, and kind of making this almost year-round will be a good thing for the area. Will activate your space for more hours and...
We want to bring some attention to the Coolidge Corridor, so, you know. It's one of those things where we can be a part of the community, not just in the sense that we serve dinner six days a week, seven days a week, but be a place where families can gather, be a part of celebrations, et cetera, so on and so forth, so.
No, it's great. It's a great concept, and I'm really glad you're pursuing it, so thank you. Okay. Well, if there's something further, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M 1323.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion Number M 1323 has passed.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Resolution Number R 223, Matter of Approving the Resolution for Updated Poverty Exemption Guidelines.
Is there a motion to approve R 0223?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, our own treasurer and treasury department worked with Oakland County Equalization each year to go through this process and make any improvements. One of the things that those two bodies realized was that the requirement for a notary was overly cumbersome, and it really sent people on kind of a goose chase to find someone that can do this for them. It's a service that is not as readily available as it ever used to be. So, perceiving that as maybe potentially a hurdle for someone to taking advantage of this great program. Both our treasurer as well as Oakland County Equalization collaborated to bring this suggested amendment to the council. No change to this exemption can be made without this body's approval. So, that's their request is please remove the notary requirements from last year's version of this. Otherwise, it remains unchanged.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Yes, Mayor Protem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Baumgarten, can you talk about the 150% that we had talked about as a counsel last year?
Certainly. So, that carries over into this as well. So, instead of just adopting the minimum standards set by the federal government, this council took the appropriate action of moving it to the asset requirements to being at 150%. So, it did allow for some additional individuals to get access to it because if you consider the broad brush that the federal government has to paint to in order to make it work everywhere, it was the proper and right requirement to actually go above that, to tailor it to more of a Berkeley standard specifically. So, I want to encourage anybody in the, to either reach out to our treasury departments or Oakland County Equalization, and if you think you don't qualify because you've seen the federal standard, follow up with those folks. You may still be able to qualify for the Berkeley standard, which is 150 times, or 150% of that requirement. So, absolutely, we encourage anybody who might be watching at home to reach out, find out. This could be, this is an incredibly useful program that people should be taking advantage of if they can.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R 0223?
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Motion Number M 1423, Matter of Authorizing the City Manager to Approve the Proposal from Carlisle Wartman Associates to Provide Professional Services to Update the Zoning Ordinance at a Cost of $88,000 to be Extended Over Two Physical Years. Funds from this expenditure will come from Account 101-801-818-000.
Is there a motion to approve M 1423?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Henan. Ms. Kapalansky?
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. So, I'm very excited to present to you all the long-awaited zoning ordinance update contract. Our selected consultant was Carlisle Wartman. They've outlined in their proposal a two-year work plan, starting with a technical review of the current zoning ordinance, various public outreach scenarios to all of our different types of media, including four topic-focused in-person workshops, office hours held here at City Hall for more specific questions, and the required public hearings. It will include coordination with our various boards and commissions, including this body, as well as the Planning Commission, monthly meetings with a designated steering committee, and then, the final product of an updated zoning ordinance and map with current graphics and much better readability than we currently have. This all comes at a cost of $88,000. I'm glad to say, though, that we were able to secure $40,000 in technical assistance from the MEDC as part of our redevelopment-ready certification work. So, the city cost would end up being $48,000 to be carried over two years.
Thank you. Questions from counsel?
I just have a comment. Working intimately with this current zoning ordinance, it is much needed. The Planning Commission really, sometimes, it's finding ordinances that are very outdated, so I welcome this to our city. It's much needed.
Thank you. When was the last zoning rewrite? Do we know?
Yeah, the full, the last full zoning ordinance rewrite was in the mid-'80s.
Oh, okay, so we're, it's time.
It's time.
Well, I just, I like the emphasis that Carlisle Wartman placed on, and you as well, on the ease of use, whether it's internally by departments or residents can look, you know, look at it and actually see and know what it means and what they're talking about. I also like that it will be coordinated with the updated master plan. I think it's very important that things look like they go together, be reflective of one another. So, another... another, so another, you know, plus. And then the environmental sustainability piece in there as well, I think is important, so, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Baumgarten, do you have anything to add?
The $40,000 from MEDC is incredibly crucial to this. It's really steps, gives us a huge step forward, because we're redevelopment-ready communities engaged. Although this does span two budget years, we will need to up what we had placed in the tentative budget for the year previous. I believe we did $25,000 for the, for two years, across two budget cycles. Obviously, even with the offset, we're coming in close to that, and so we will see a slight uptick in that amount, because I think the bulk of the work's going to happen over the next fiscal year instead of this fiscal year, but we'll have that conversation at our budget hearings.
Yes.
A reference earlier, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone from the public that would like to ask a question or have any input on this? Okay. Counsel, we good? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-1423?
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-123, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 2-39 of Article II, Officers and Employees of Chapter Two Administration, to modify provisions relating to insurance and indemnification of city officials, employees, and board and commission members.
Is there a motion to approve O-0123?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Patterson. Mr. Christ, I'm going to toss this right to you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. It's a pleasure to be here. Your Honor, this proposed ordinance amendment addresses chapter 2-39 of the Code of Ordinances, and it goes to the question that arose as it relates to elected officials and employees being indemnified, and there was some question with respect to whether that was broad enough, and whether that, as written, applied to boards, committee members, and authority members that are created by the city. This proposed amendment would make that clear, that indemnification in the normal course of their job duties and roles would be a covered indemnification by the city.
Okay, thank you. That's an important inclusion. Discussion from council. Any public input? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on O-0123?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-223, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to the City Code to amend section 94-9, portable signs in chapter 94 signs, in section 138-108, promotional events in chapter 138, zoning of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to remove the requirements for annual permits for portable signs and clarify portable sign regulations in relation to temporary events.
Is there a motion to approve O-0223?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Vilani. Ms. Kapalansky?
Yes, good evening again. So a while ago, as part of the COVID regulations that were put into place, portable sign permits were suspended, and they have not been required for the past two years. In those two years, they have not been an issue in terms of enforcement, and staff is recommending at this point that we just get rid of the portable sign permit requirement. All of the regulations that go with portable signs would still remain, and instead of it being a permitted issue, it would become a code enforcement issue. In the past two years, since we have not had permits, there have been no code enforcement violations, so I wouldn't anticipate a big rush of those in the future. We're asking you to approve the first reading of this this evening.
Thank you. Discussion from council.
Madam Mayor, how much is a permit? Is it a free, or is there a charge for a permit?
There is a charge for the permit. I think it's $30. So as part of a, we're also working on a comprehensive fee schedule update, so we would take care of that at that time as well, but...
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, yes, Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly will support this. I think it makes all the sense in the world, and I appreciate the factual insights into the lack of, you know, need for code enforcement. That's a very good thing. I remember in years past now, we've talked about a comprehensive sign review, and for many years, I've been kind of requesting that we take a look at lawn signs in people's yards, right? We made changes years ago to allow any number of political signs for as long as they want, but yet you can't have non-political signs more than two, unless that's been changed by administration. So just encouraging continuing to do these kinds of things, and also keep in mind that there are many other things that we're eager to see revised and brought up to date. So, yeah, I will absolutely be supporting this, and I'll be rooting for more.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on O-0123?
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-323, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend section 138-32, section 138-387, section 138-394, section 138-419, section 138-427, section 138-457, section 138-487, and section 138-529 of chapter 138 zoning of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances in order to regulate vape shops.
Is there a motion to approve O-0323?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dooley. Ms. Kapalansky?
Yes, the Planning Commission has spent the last several months crafting some ordinance provisions with the assistance of staff and their planning consultant, Carlisle Wartman, in order to limit the concentration of vape and tobacco shops, particularly near schools. The amendment before you this evening includes an updated definition of those sorts of establishments, as well as an update to the permitted districts where those would be allowed. Particularly, I want to note, in terms of the limiting the concentration, there's also a provision in there that limits, prohibits a new vape shop to be located within 1,000 feet of an existing vape shop. So that's on top of the district regulations that would exist as well. The Planning Commission did recommend approval and held the public hearing, and we're asking for approval of the first reading from council this evening.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? Public input? Okay. Well, thank you for bringing this before us. I think it's a positive step to tighten up some of the things that we've been talking about over the years, and this seems to be moving in the right direction, well thought out. I appreciate your attention to this, Ms. Kapalansky. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on O-0323?
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 12 on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O-423, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend section 138-458 of chapter 138 zoning, in order to add nursery schools, day nurseries, and child centers to the 12-mile district as a special use.
Is there a motion to approve O-0423?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Ms. Kapalansky?
Yeah, another ordinance amendment for you this evening.
Coming.
This is in response to a business owner request who would like to expand a daycare that's existing in 12-mile right now. Currently, daycares are not permitted in the 12-mile district, so in order for her to expand, they would need to be added. The Planning Commission considered this one as well, recommended that it be added as a special land use instead of a principal permitted use. There are a number of conditions that were included. Those are the same conditions that were included as part of a recent amendment to the local business district when daycares were added as part of the development of the kinder care facility. So we just moved those over as well. The Planning Commission's biggest concern, if you took a look at the minutes, was the drop-offs and pickups and traffic associated with that, so the special land use provision would allow us to control the Planning Commission and the council to make sure that that's been provided for appropriately and wouldn't negatively impact the streets and other businesses.
Thank you. Questions from council or comments? Councilmember Vilani?
So will this expansion allow them to take in more children as part of the services they offer, or just expand the use they have for the existing kids in care?
It would be expanding the size of the use, so the footprint of the use. The number of children they have is based on square footage provided and staff, which is regulated by the state. So it would not get into the number of children, but the actual physical size of the use.
Okay, thank you.
Any public input? Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on O-0423?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number 13 on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-1523, matter of authorizing the non-corporate resolution approving accountant Lori Fielder to conduct financial transactions on behalf of the City of Berkeley with multi-bank securities for investment purposes within the guidelines of Public Act 20 of the Michigan Public Acts.
Is there a motion to approve M-1523?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Dooley. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Third behind tax revenue and state revenue sharing is investment interest as far as the major funds, or the major sources of revenue for the general fund. So with that being said, we want to try to take as many opportunities as possible to make sure the city is getting the best return on its investment interest as possible. We already utilized the Oakland County's local government investment pool, which is starting to improve as far as what we get from there, but this opens up another avenue for us and allows for finance to make authorized investments in consultation with the city's interests, as well as under the strict regulation of the state statutes that permits this. But in order to do so, we need to have this document approved by the local governing board before we can even move forward on it at all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Your approach, and Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick comment. I think important for folks to know that Public Act 20 does put in place a lot of very strict rules, guidelines, regulations, I mean, safety, liquidity, and then third consideration is yield for investment purposes. So, safety is certainly first and foremost, and so I think there's a certain amount of, you know, Public Act 20 really does provide for a lot of security in local government investments, so, just a general comment.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M-1523?
Baker?
Yes.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M-1523 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number 14 on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-1623, matter of authorizing the amendment of the 2022-2023 budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve M-1623?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, quarterly, we bring budget amendments before this body so that we can stay on top of changes and various things that affect both the revenues and the expenditures. This comes to you in the normal course of that policy and project. I want to point out a couple of things, that your memo notes the city's adherence to the recently expanded fund balance policies, and goes item by, goes fund by fund, and I'll point that out here, and the first page of the memo there goes to the general fund, the major streets, the local streets, solid waste, water and sewer, rec revolving fund, as well as the DDA's fund reserve. So, again, keeping in line with our newly adopted and newly expanded Fund Balance Guide, so, but each of those are consistent with the policy that was adopted. And then, moving to the budget amendments themselves, you'll see a line-by-line accounting of the changes that were noted. They're too many to go through individually, but they're not, you know, but they come to you directly as they would come to us. We can track point by point how each of these items are performing. So the city continues to stay on top of good financial management, as reflected in our audit and the GFOA, the Government Financial Accounting of Ameri, Accounts, Government Finance of America, the people that regulate this, GFOA. We continue to receive awards for them for a reason, and it's because of good accounting and transparency such as this.
Thank you. Discussion from council? Okay, public input? Okay. Yeah.
So the hook truck, I believe, was budgeted in 2021, but I'm not sure what happened to that money, how it ended up today, if the truck's being delivered today, or this budget year, I should say.
Sure, if I may, Madam Mayor. So when we, you actually, again, government finance is a strictly regulated industry, so we, through the accounting system that we have, we have, these things hit our budget when we take delivery of them, so that's how we end up seeing it now, as we take delivery of items, not necessarily, even if they're ordered in the year that they're budgeted for, then they put into, and they're not delivering the same budget year, they're putting into, that expenditure is put into a reserve count, and it sits until we actually take delivery of the service and goods. So that's why you see these things delayed at times, especially across budget years. I know it's listed in here, I don't have, you know, the exact information on it, just I tip my fingertips. I can follow up with you, Mr. Euforts, but that is, that's very typical for what we see across these budget years. You order them one year, you receive them another, and the expenditure actually is reflected in the budget year for the year you take delivery, not before.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M-1623?
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Okay, we've now reached the communications portion of the evening. Ms. Mitchell, who's up?
Mayor Protem Gavin.
All right.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things, Parks and Rec, a couple items from that department. A big thank you to Parks and Rec staff and sponsors for the hugely attended Winterfest 2023 that we had over the weekend. And even bigger thankful, thank you to all the joyful faces who attended. So it was a really great event. Huge turnout, just a lot of fun generally for the community, so. Additionally, Senior Valentine's Day Bingo on Tuesday, February 14th, from 12:30 to 2:30 p.m. at the Community Center. Costs us $10 and includes lunch and two bingo cards. Another item from Parks and Rec, AARP Tax Aid is now available at the Berkeley Senior Center. Appointments must be made and can be done by calling Berkeley Parks and Rec at 248-658-3470. Registration for Early Bird Summer Day Camp is now open, so you can head to registration.berkleymish.org to sign your kid up. And then last, from Parks and Rec, the next meeting is this Thursday, the 9th, at 7:00 p.m. And then, moving on to the Environmental Advisory Committee. We had a great discussion at EAC last month about an Earth Day event in conjunction with Royal Oak. They put an event on last year, widely attended, and so there's talk about collaborating between our two communities and other communities to do what we can to kind of help make that event even bigger and more successful. For next month, Sean Young, who I know was here earlier, he's going to be at the February meeting, talking about green stormwater infrastructure. So that's going to be very exciting. And then also, just, there was a general discussion on what projects the EAC will take part in this year. So rain barrel classes, bike corral expansion, you know, Sakura Recycling Day in Berkeley, and then just general speakers that we're going to have at the library on more environmental issues. So the next meeting will be the 16th, so next week, at 6:30 p.m. on the second floor of the Public Safety Department. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani.
First off, congrats to Greg Patterson on your first meeting and being sworn in today. Excited to be working alongside with you. For the Berkeley Area Chamber, as Director McGinnis indicated earlier, there's a ribbon cutting this Friday evening at 5:00 for Core Fitness on 12-mile. The next Chamber Chat will be next Friday, February 17th, from 8:30 to 9:30 at the American Legion. No registration is necessary. You can just show up. And for any of our business owners in the area, the new member packet deadline is February 10th. This is your opportunity to get flyers and promotional materials to introduce new residents to your businesses. If you're interested, drop off 50 of your items to the Therapeutic Rehab Building on Coolidge. For the CEAC and TAC Committee, there are no updates. We have not met since the last meeting. The next meeting is February 15th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Berkeley Public Safety Building. And then, lastly, good luck to the Anderson Middle School girls volleyball teams. Tomorrow is their season opener.
Thank you. Councilmember Dooley.
Just a congratulations to both Pattersons. Deputy City Deputy Clerk Patterson. Welcome aboard. It's nice. I really have nothing to report this weekend or this week, but everybody have a great week.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you. The Planning Commission met on January 24th. We saw two of those ordinances tonight that they worked on. And there was also a discussion about outdoor seating amongst the members of the Planning Commission. They held an open house on the 31st of January on the topic of parking at the high school. It was fairly well-attended, and they haven't released that information yet that they gathered, but it was a nice night. The next meeting will be a work session between Planning Commission and City Council on February 28th to discuss parklets. So there was some discussion about that before, so they brought us, they're going to bring us together to discuss. So it's kind of nice. Another thing I want to thank Mr. Baumgarten for the training. I am signed up to attend my first Virtual Elected Officials Academy through the MML, and thank you to Councilmember Henan for sending me that link with lots of information to try to get me up to speed as fast as I can. So I thank you for that. That is it.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, thank you. Also, welcome, Councilmember Patterson. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, they had no cases to hear in January, and none are scheduled for February. The Tree Board, in their January meeting, they made plans for 2023 initiatives that includes increasing community education and outreach and continuing to find more ways to get more trees into the city. Their next meeting is on Monday, February 27th, at 7:00 p.m. And then, just a general note, we had a visitor to the Tree Board meeting, which is always nice, and just a reminder for the people at home that, like the council meetings, most of the meetings we talk about up here are open to the public, and you're welcome to come and attend. So, you know, if you have input or want to learn what's going on in the city and some of these other committees, stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I too would like to welcome Councilmember Patterson and also Deputy Clerk Patterson, who also happens to be a very vibrant member of our Historical Committee. So she continues to serve the city in multiple ways and very thankful for her talents and energy. The Downtown Development Authority Board meets in two days' time, on Wednesday, February 8th, at 8:30 a.m. Topics from their most recent meeting last month, January 11th, included a draft budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's insight into how these things get made through successive rounds of reviews and amendments and updates. And so we're looking forward to seeing how that continues to reflect the goals and values of our downtown, which is great. Downtown promotional event strategy, the parking study progress, and again, thanks to those who were able to attend and participate. And I believe the survey went out. For those who weren't able to make it in person, they have an opportunity to chime in with a window of a couple of weeks or something fun like that. Coolidge Complete Streets and Crosswalks action, the Robina North conceptual design, continuing thoughts on that, the art space at Coolidge in Cantalpa, strategic approaches to enhancing the mural program. As you can tell, there's a lot going on in the downtown these days, which is great. Again, stay tuned. This is our last, our first and only meeting in February. So stay tuned for a month-long Leprechaun scavenger hunt coming up in March, along with Leprechaun's Day Out from March 16th through the 19th. So there's a couple of days in there, but you know how they like to count. That's fun. And for information on all that and more, please visit downtownberkeley.com. And I chose to close with the Historical Committee to say that their meeting is next week's Tuesday, the 21st, at 7:00. They continue to make the preparations for the 100th anniversary of us becoming a village. And the January meeting had been canceled, and so the approximate size and location for the time capsule associated with that is still to be determined, but they say it should be next week for sure. So it'll be really fun to figure that out. New to the museum, if you haven't been in there in a little while, is a phone booth that was originally in Patton Gill from the 50s, and it was removed in 1978. And so the committee would like to extend their gratitude to Judy Berry for the gift, and of course, to our DPW for all their hard work in retrieving it and installing it and making it safe. And I've heard that it's been, become quite the popular place for selfies inside of that phone booth. The old phone and everything like that, which is really cool. Let's see, work is underway for historic location plaques, little markers, those things that you see outside famous buildings, for both Patton Gill and Angel Schools in partnership with the school district. That's going along very well. Visitors are always welcome. The museum is open most Wednesdays from 10:00 to 1:00, and Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00. And they're available at, the website is berkeleyhistory.com. And finally, I brought along a little book. We are in Black History Month, and this is our only time to do this. So I really thought about what to highlight, and so this isn't like a comfortable topic, but I think it's an important topic. This book is called Sun Downtowns. This was given to me last month, and I'm a little ways into it, and I certainly look forward to finishing it. Sun Downtowns aren't something to be super happy about, but they're something that we need to be aware of. A brief quote, "For decades, sundown towns kept out African-Americans. Some excluded other groups, such as Mexican-Americans, Native Americans, or Asians-Americans, Jews, even Catholics and Mormons." Let's see, they were called sundown towns because some, in past decades, placed signs at their city limits, typically saying some version of N-word, "Don't let the sun go down on you in this town." And that's horrible, because if you're caught, you know, you could be arrested, you could be harassed or abused. It's awful. I'd like to raise awareness of this because there were more than 10,000 sundown towns in the U.S. that have been documented, meaning there's evidence of having such signs and such behaviors. More than 100 in Michigan, including folks that have since, obviously, made great strides with Royal Oak, Troy, Birmingham, Lathrop Village, and so many others, having official documentation to this effect. Now, Berkeley's mentioned in passing, not as being an official sundown town, but from some of the policies and procedures that have led in that same general direction. And I chose to follow the Historical Committee with this because if you do choose to go into the museum, not only check out the phone booth and take a photo in there, but there is full-page ads that were printed in the paper promoting homeownership and buying homes in certain parts of our city that literally say "whites only." And that's been a part of Berkeley's history. So we've got a long ways to go. We've come a long ways, for sure. But here in Black History Month, I thought it'd be important to say, you know, there's a lot to learn and a lot to make additional progress on. Not only at the, you know, their individual levels, how we see things, but us as an institution, this very body, these kinds of things. Can learn a lot and hopefully make positive change. So with that, especially given this kind of scary, horrible truthful context, please hug somebody that you love. Folks out there need that, and I think you'll feel better for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those following Berkeley by email, and please do, please sign up for those. You saw that on January 31st, we had our first water main break of the year. When that was called in, the temperature outside read six. Not 60, not 16, but six. But it's true to form. Our Public Works teams were out there. They got in the hole. They made the repairs needed, all the while just being absolutely blistered by cold air and winds. That is a microcosm of the level of service that we provide here. These are the things that the dedicated public servants that serve this community do day in and day out, because it's their job and because it makes the city better. And so, kudos to them. Thank you for what they do. We had a water, another water main break today as well. I can tell you, it's not all that much more pleasant repairing these things in 40-degree weather as it is in 60-degree weather, but it's what needs to be done. And therefore, the men and women that serve this community rise to the challenge each and every time. So thank you to each and every one of them that do that, and just more evidence of how great it is to live in Berkeley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crist.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. So I do welcome Councilmember Patterson and Deputy Clerk Rachel Patterson. We're happy to have you here with us and look forward to moving the city forward together. I did want to mention, I know the parking open house was mentioned, but I do want to say that there are two surveys that are open until February 24th, and there's a link on the city's website to those surveys. So if you want to take them and voice your opinions, you have until February 23rd, I'm sorry, 24th to do that. We have a millage vote coming up in May. Please educate yourself by going to the city's website and clicking on the link. It's called 2023 Millage. It's at the top to the right. It is chock-full of information. It's updated. As we get more information, the city updates that. There will be a calculator. I think the calculator is there now. You can type in your address, and you will know exactly what the cost will be for your household by your address. I urge people, whether you vote yes or no, I implore you to please educate yourself before you make that vote and not educate yourself on social media, or what your neighbor might have told you, or somebody told somebody and told somebody. Please use the city website and the dashboard that we have available to you for that purpose. And if you'd like to help bridge the gap between information and advocacy, there's a citizens group forming. You can email any of us here or at council@berkleymish.net, and we will make sure that we put you in touch with other residents that are interested in helping bridge that gap as well. I know Winterfest was mentioned, and I just wanted to add that I attended this year with my grandson, and I'm sure I had more fun than he did. It was during his naptime. He was just a little bit salty. But CMN-TV asked me, "Well, what's your favorite part of this?" And I have to say that it was the community. It was seeing over 1,300 people out. The weather was, I'm going to call it balmy for February. It was, the sun was out, and it just felt good to be outside and to see people that we hadn't seen in a while. So kudos to Parks and Rec for putting that on, and especially Amanda, all of her hard work in spearheading this event and making it be what it was. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker.[1735.82]